We're ready to go.
Good evening and welcome to downtown Grand Forks. This is Monday, October 26, 2020, and the Grand Forks City Council Committee of the Hall meeting. Item one, call to order, welcome and roll call.
Wyld.
Here.
Dassler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Ma.
Here.
Kabami.
Here.
Mandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Thank you. Onto discussion items. Mr. Weber, did you have an acknowledgement that you wanted to make before we get into the agenda?
Yeah, unless Council President Sandier or myself. Dana, do you have a preference?
Yeah, well, thank you. I certainly will leave it open to you if you'd like to say something about Miles. I did want to mention that Miles was always someone who had a smile and was always ready to help, and it was very unfortunate when I learned that Miles had passed away. And so, Mr. Weber, if you have more to add to that, I think he certainly will be missed around City Hall.
Sure. Miles was head of maintenance here at City Hall. As Dana said, always a smile. I'm sad that I didn't make the time to get to know him better. He had a master's in geography from UND, and I believe he also worked at UND. And just, Miles, you're going to be missed. That's all I've got for right now. I wish I'd known you better. Thanks.
Mr. Weber, did you have anything else?
Sure. Mr. Gaustead, as a council, we have not experienced a veto before. It's my understanding that'll be on next week's agenda. If you could just give us a briefing of what the process is and what we can expect.
Yeah. The way, and I'll read the ordinance, it's 2-103, subsection 34, that ordinance is a resolutions that were vetoed by the mayor are presented to the city council by the city auditor at the next regular meeting, which will be next week. An action on a motion to override the veto occurs at that next regular meeting, and it requires a vote of five members to override a veto.
And that'll just be a motion that will come to us as? That'll just be a motion that'll come to us as part of the agenda?
The way I understand it, it'll be on the agenda for next week.
It won't be a motion, someone would have to make the motion. Does it matter who makes the motion? Does it have to, can be anyone, or?
It doesn't say, it doesn't put any limitations on who can make the motion.
Very good. Thanks for that update.
Thank you. So we will get started with our discussion items. If anyone would like to speak to an item, we probably have one or two that are of interest. If you will fill out a speaker card, and we'll get somebody to put them in the basket, and that way we are organized and ready for people. And we'll try to do that in a regular fashion, so we don't have to make people gather together too close. So, item 2.1, 2021 CDBG and Community Services Grant Programs. Ms. Richards.
Good evening. It is time to start our annual allocation process for these two programs. Typically, it's been fairly routine until COVID came along. This year, what we're looking at is a process very similar to the process we started with at the end of last year, with a budget of about $450,000 of entitlement money coming from HUD, locally generated program income of $190,000, and then HomeSense revolving loan funds, that's kind of an in and out through our, again, it's a housing rehab revolving loan fund, and then the local funding from Fund 2163 for the Community Services Grant Program. This year, we're looking at, again, $450,000 for CDBG entitlement, $190 for program income, and $128,000 for that local funding for operating funds. That's about what we were looking at last year until COVID came along. When it was time to actually finalize the allocations early this year, we got CARES Act money from HUD that was used to kind of supplant that local funding. Obviously, there was concern about local sales tax receipts, and so, again, it's to be overly cautious. That money was held, and the CDBGCV funds were used to kind of supplement those operating funds. We do have additional CARES Act funding. We're not looking at the allocation process for that tonight. We're asking to kind of put a hold on that for a brief time while we look at that remaining CARES Act funding that's coming through the state, kind of come back with a combined recommendation for that in the near future. The other piece that was discussed last year was a couple of council people were concerned about the past precedent of allowing other taxing entities to apply for these funds. And so, we agreed that this year, before any advertisement of availability of funds is made, we would address that explicitly with council to make sure that there was no question then at the back end when we come back for approval. This was discussed by our community advisory committee briefly. They recognized that the projects that had been funded for the school district or park district in the past, they felt did meet HUD's requirements to basically serve the neighborhood or the beneficiaries rather than the entity that received the funding, and so they had no problem with continuing to make those funds available to those entities. But of course, it is a council decision. So, what I'm asking for tonight is not any decision on the use of funds, just authorizing staff to proceed with advertising for the availability of the funds, as I've laid it out, at those dollar amounts. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Weber?
Yes, first of all, I'll move approval, but I do have another question. Well, I should wait for a second first, and then I'll ask a question if there is.
Is there a second? Mr. Kabami? Okay. Mr. Weber?
Yeah, the CSG, this is the first time the city will be making funds directly available through this process for human service needs in the community. We've not had that since before the flood. We opted to forego that this last year, as you've noted, because of the CARES funding that came in. That is, the intent was to have that adjusted for inflation each year? Is that correct?
Typically, Maureen, all of those re-grant funds are kind of in parallel with sales tax receipts, so as sales tax receipts go up, the allocation goes up accordingly. If sales tax receipts go down, likewise. So, yes, that's been the process that we followed for several years.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments? On the phone, any direction? No? All right, well, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2.2, 2020-2021 Snowmobile Route. Good evening.
Council Vice President Mauck, members of the committee, this is merely housekeeping item information only. By Grand Forks ordinance, every year, the chief of police is responsible for setting the snowmobile route. Basically, that's not done in a vacuum. We do, as we consult with the local snowmobile club as well as with Greenway staff. They've reviewed what we had last year for the snowmobile route, and both entities agreed that no plan, there should be no changes to the route. So, basically, the information to let you know what we'll be publishing is that the snowmobile route and map will be the same as it was last year.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 2.3, Special Assessment Districts and Engineers Reports for Project Numbers 8214, 8260, 8261, District Number 751, 7579, and 350, paving and streetlights, box culvert, and water main for 44th Avenue South. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Mauck, members of the committee. This project is the next in line of several projects to develop the Edgewood Village subdivision. This general area is bounded on the north by 40th Avenue, on the south by 47th Avenue, and on the east by the south end drainway. Currently, the south end drainway is a easterly barrier to traffic. 44th Avenue was constructed in Edgewood Village, and it's existing eastward to, in the area of Washington Street. This project will connect 44th Avenue over the drainway via a box culvert, pavement, streetlights, and we would also extend the water main pipe from Edgewood Village to the easterly subdivision. This provides looping of the system and has benefits for redundancy and water quality. So with that, we are requesting the council create a special assessment district, approve the engineer's report as reflected in this staff report, and direct the engineering department to prepare plans and specifications for this project.
Mr. Weber?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. A second. Mr. Bean? Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Item 2.4, Design Engineering Services Agreement for Project Numbers 8214, 8260, and 8261. Oh, did I already do this? Or is this the same? Are we on 2.4? Okay, I'm sorry. Item 2.4, Design Engineering Services Agreement for Project Numbers 8214, 8260, 8261, District Number 751, 579, and 350, paving and streetlights, box culvert, and water main for 44th Avenue South.
Thank you once again. This staff report does pertain to the project that we just, projects we just discussed under 2.3. The difference is, this is recommending an engineering agreement task order be entered with CPS to perform design services. CPS is very qualified, as they've done much of the development in the Edgewood Village neighborhood, and we are requesting council approval for their assistance with the design of these projects. So we are requesting approval for a task order in the amount of $79,178 for design services only at this time.
Thank you. Any discussion or motion?
Move approval.
Move approval. Is there a second? A second by Mr. Bean. Any further discussion? Yes?
If I may, is there a reason we're not doing this design in-house?
Thank you for the question. We do prefer to keep projects in-house. We routinely have to look at our in-house capabilities and other projects that we have upcoming, so we are very judicious. We opted to keep the construction inspection piece of this in-house, but we feel that this would be a benefit both for workload and for talent to get CPS's services on the design.
For talent, can you help me?
For the box culvert design, that's one thing that's unique, that they've already looked at, and they're very familiar with the Edgewood Village subdivision. They've done much of the survey work and have developed, designed some of the other projects in the vicinity.
Very good, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.5, Design Engineering Services Agreement for Project 8262, Intersection Improvements at South Washington Street and 36th Avenue South.
Thank you once again. This project is one of our projects listed in the 2021 budget and in our six-year capital improvement plan. What this does is signalizes the intersection of Washington Street and 36th Avenue South. You may recall, this area was, 36th Avenue was just constructed this summer. This area has very high traffic volume, and in addition, the left turn lanes on Washington, both northbound and southbound, are offset. This can prove a challenge for vehicles in those turn lanes to see oncoming traffic. So this project improves this intersection by signalizing it and realigning those left turn lanes. As such, we are recommending the assistance of Houston Engineering. They have extensive design work in signals. They actually just completed the signalized intersection at 43rd and Columbia, or they're finishing that up for us. So we are requesting an engineering task order to support the design of that project at this time.
Thank you. Any discussion, Mr. Weber?
Again, we're farming this out instead of doing it in-house. Should we be beefing up our engineering staff? Is this, yes?
I think that's probably a longer discussion as far as long-term recommendations for additional staffing, but I think at this time, we judiciously pick the projects where we feel we can provide adequate design service and talent in-house, and balance that with consultant support as well.
Very good, and thanks for answering the question. It was somewhat rhetorical, I thought that I knew the answer, just setting the stage for down the road. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion, is our second. Mr. Kabami? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 2.6, Bid Awards for Project Number 8068, Shared Use Path on South Columbia Road, 40th to 47th Avenue South. Good evening.
Good evening, Council Vice President Mauck and members of the committee. What you have before you is a bid opening and recommendation for bid award for shared use path on South Columbia Road from 40th to 47th Avenue South. The shared use path is proposed to be on the west side of the road and connecting it to existing shared use paths at the intersection of Columbia and 40th and Columbia and 47th. We received three bidders on this project, with bids ranging from approximately $267,000 to just under $300,000. The low bid was from Op Construction in the amount of $267,321.90, which was approximately 21% below the engineer's estimate. So we ended up receiving some good bids on this one. Overall, the anticipated total project cost is approximately $386,000, with the city's share of the project approximately of $148,000. And with that, staff is recommending approval, wording the contract to the little bidder, Op Construction contingent upon occurrence of the DOT.
Thank you. Mr. Kabami?
Just want to thank the engineering staff for receiving three bids. Appreciate it. Thank you. Motion approval.
Is there a second? Ms. Stockler? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Item 2.7, Federal Funding Requests for 2021 through 2026 for Several Programs, Regional Roads, Urban Roads Program, Highway Safety Improvement Program, Rail Highways Crossing Safety Enhancements, Transportation Alternatives, and Urban Grant Program.
Thank you once again. If it's all right with the committee, I'm just going to kind of go through these programs all at the same time, and if you could, hold questions until the end. I'm just going to go through the proposed projects that we're going to be, or staff is recommending for requesting funding on. First is the Regional Road Program. This handles projects that are within the jurisdiction of the North Dakota Department of Transportation. And I've got up on the screen a couple of maps that'll help kind of describe a few of these projects in a little bit more detail for location. Just kind of going from north to south, we have the environmental documentation for the I-29 and 32nd Avenue South congestion project, which is potentially going to be a 47th Avenue interchange. This project was originally programmed for 2020, however, because of COVID and concerns of funding, staff is recommending shifting this over to 2021. In addition to that, in this area, we have the construction project, which would be related to that, which would be for 2024. And in that same general location, 32nd Avenue South Rehabilitation Project in 2023, moving north and over to north, or South Washington, we would have reconstruction of South Washington from DeMarz to Hanley, proposed in 2024. North Washington, from 1st Avenue North to 8th Avenue North, reconstruction in 2026. And then, on Gateway Drive, Rehabilitation Project, concrete panel replacement and concrete grinding, proposed in 2025. Next up, it will be the discussion of the Urban Roads Program. These are funds for our classified roadway systems in town. As you can kind of see, we currently have two projects which are programmed. First one is in 2021 for the Columbia Road Overpass, sorry, the Columbia Road Reconstruction from the overpass to University, and then the Columbia Road Rehabilitation of the overpass in 2024. For the next proposed project, staff is recommending reconstruction of Columbia Road from University to 8th. This is just a natural continuation of reconstructing a section of Columbia Road. Next up, and unfortunately, I do not have a map for this one, is the Highway Safety Improvement Program. This is the safety program. And for this one, we are recommending that we do a road safety review for the intersection of DeMarz and Washington. This intersection is regularly on the DOT's urban high crash intersection. And we also are recommending a speed minder sign program for purchasing five speed minder signs to be installed with city forces. Moving along, we have the Rail Highway Crossing Safety Enhancement Program. With this program, as you may be aware, we are looking to acquire a property over near the University Avenue and Millsburg Crossing. But this, but the proposed product for this one would be, would be an installation of signals and gaithens at this crossing location for general improvement of safety at that location. Next up is the Transportation Alternatives, and this is a program which we just discussed with the Columbia Road Shared Use Path Project, because that was the same one that was funded through that, and you can see that project right here. Through the same program, we also have University Avenue Shared Use Path, which is funded for 2021, likely construction either in '21 or '22. We've had discussions on the TA program in the past, and whether or not it is cost-effective for us to move forward using that program, just because of the local costs associated with it. The DOT is currently soliciting for projects in 2023 and 2024, and at this point in time, staff is recommending that for 2023, we end up funding a local-only project on 32nd Avenue, extending from just west of Heartland Drive to South 48th Street, and then in 2024, applying for TA funding to go from 32nd Avenue South to about 22nd Avenue South. If we are unable to receive funding through the TA program on that, we can always construct that path using local funds. Next up, we have the Urban Grant Program. This is part of the governor's Main Street Initiative for downtown areas. In the past, we have received funding for the reconstruction of North 3rd Street and North 4th Street, and what staff is recommending for, applying for funding for, would be an asphalt mill and overlay of a number of downtown streets, which are highlighted in red. And I believe that concludes the various programs, and these are information only. These will be coming again at a future committee of the hall for approval.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Wyld?
Just one thing, under the Transportation Alternatives, the sidewalk that goes from North 48th Street to the entrance of the Mobile Home Park, I know you guys have looked at expanding that and making that bigger. I've talked to at least one resident that isn't in favor of it, just because they lose a chunk of their yard, and they're not very happy, but have we thought about moving that across the street so it runs along with the park? And then from North 53rd Street to 55th Street, there actually is no sidewalk on that south side of the street. So I'm wondering if these dollars could be used, instead of expanding one sidewalk and tearing a decent one out, actually connecting another sidewalk between the two on the south side of University from 53rd to 55th?
Overall, we have kind of looked at this area before, and this project is actually connecting to two existing shared use paths. That was part of the reason why we went for that funding, is because of the continuation of the shared use path on the north side of the road. I will agree with you that there is no sidewalk on the south side, and that's something I think we've looked into in the past, and I believe we have shifted policy on funding sidewalks that are on the rear of properties, and I think that's some of the issue in that area as well, but that's certainly something we can look into.
Perfect. I just think with that, as well as maybe having conversation with those, I think it's only four or five properties that are affected, but really getting their input on what they'd like to see would go a long way.
Certainly.
And then, my only other question is, do any of the streets that run like Hamlin, Oxford, Princeton, any of those streets happen to fall in? Oxford, Princeton, any of those streets happen to fall into any of these programs for improvement? I know there's a couple of streets on, just that run north and south on campus that could really use some work.
Typically, for federal aid, it needs to be a classified roadway, and a number of those streets, Hamlin, Princeton, Oxford, those are all classified as local streets. So those would not be eligible for federal funds.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further comment, Mr. Weber?
The railroad, the Millsburg Crossing on University. I know that there's, I believe there's an ongoing study to look at the situation with the Millsburg at Gateway, and one of the options is to actually move the Millsburg. How is that study coming along? And I'm wondering if that's still on the table, how much it makes sense for us to apply for funding, or to be even buying property there, if that's a possibility, or is that no longer a possibility?
Unfortunately-
The movement of the Millsburg.
Unfortunately, I'm not overly attached to that study that I believe the MPO is doing regarding the skewed intersection up on Gateway and Washington. Though from my understanding, if, even if there is a connection to the north, it is likely that this Millsburg would still be in existence and would likely still be in use. So this is still a good preventative measure, at least for the short to midterm, unless something changes otherwise.
Very good. And then the railroad bridge on North Washington, which we've been, I've been hoping for years and years now for it to be reconstructed. I know we've had some discussions about the possibility of bus rapid transit going straight from downtown to the university along there, but it seems that there's some almost insurmountable challenges in terms of the amount of roadway that would have to be cut away. Is there room for a bike and pedestrian trail to run alongside the, run along the Dyke Corridor to connect the university and downtown?
That is something I am not overly familiar on to the details on, but that is something I know that the consultant who's working on that project is currently working on a decision document. But that is something we can definitely look into, and I can follow up with you regarding some of those details.
Very much. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Are you needing a motion? Was this just information only?
Correct. These items are information only.
Thank you so much. Item 2.8, wastewater collections rebuild motor for lift station 32. Good evening.
Good evening. This evening, committee members, I'm asking to approve a quote from IPS. It's for $22,312.90 to rewind a motor at lift station 32. Wastewater Collections Department brought this to our attention. The motor had some seals and bearings prepared on it last year after some heavy rain events. We normally don't need this pump with this motor unless we really get heavy precipitation. So it's a dry season for us, and they pulled the motor and did get this quote from IPS, who's also done work on this for us in the past.
Move approval.
A motion. Is there a second?
Second from Mr. Bean. Any further comments?
Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.9, Section 5339 grant application. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President, Vice President Mock and committee members. What this is, is an application for the funding for Section 5339B funds, which is bus grant only funds that are available. We have one vehicle that we will be needing to replace because it has exceeded its useful life, both in mileage and in years of service out there. And so this particular grant is actually 85% federal funds, 15% local funds. Normally, they're 80/20. So we're applying for the funds for this one particular vehicle. It's all we need to replace.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Move approval.
We have a motion, we'll say by Cavami, and a second by Ken. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 210, Safe Kids Grand Forks Program overview and funding request. Good evening.
Good evening, Council Vice President Mock and members of the committee. I have with me this evening, Karma Hansen from Safe Kids Grand Forks. She's the coordinator. In front of you is similar to other grants that we've done with CBIC. It is a multi-year request to fund as part of a community partnership. Altru has had some, obviously, some financial troubles. They used to be, they were a many-decade service provider for Safe Kids Grand Forks. Now they are looking at a $250,000 budget, of which half of that they would like to have from community partners like the City of Grand Forks. I've attached a lot of the information regarding what Safe Kids Grand Forks does. They do a lot of great things for children in many different safety areas. Moving forward, Altru is going to continue to be part of it. They're going to provide a lot of in-kind support, but they're asking partners such as the City of Grand Forks and Grand Forks County to help partner. The request in front of you is similar to the Grand Forks County's to provide $25,000 to make a commitment over the next five years. And again, we make budgets, approval annually, so we can commit to, we can only commit to things. For example, CBIC is a funded organization, partnered organization, that supports our public safety organizations to include the police department, similar to where I think what Safe Kids Grand Forks is trying to do in this case, too. In that case, we, the City of Grand Forks provides funding of about $210,000 annually for that. This request is for $25,000, in a similar vein, to keep this going, at least for the next five years. With that, I would ask Karma Hansen to come up and provide further details. And tonight, we're asking for approval from a City of Grand Forks fund. I would say we would generally try to find this within the general fund because it is a request and a service that we would provide as part of public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Good evening, Vice President Mock and City Council members. My name is Karma Hansen, and I'm delighted to be with you here tonight. I know many of you from the work that I've done with Safe Kids over the years. I've been with the program for 24 years, and Altru Health System has been the lead agency for Safe Kids Grand Forks since it was started in our community back in 1992. Safe Kids Grand Forks is a part of a, actually a worldwide organization. We're in all the states in the United States. There's 440 coalitions, and in 30 countries around the world. Of those 440 coalitions, 54% of them are based out of hospitals and health systems. And most of those coalitions, over the years, have had to reach out or have done fundraising on their own for their coalitions and the work that we do, because we're not a government-funded organization or anything like that. That being said, we have been very, very blessed that Altru has put lots and lots of funding and support into the work that we do over the years. And right now, as many health systems are, there are challenges in front of each of them. And unlike, unlike the other coalitions around the country, we are in a spot where we would like to reach out to our partners in city, county, state, private individuals, businesses, to come along and partner with us in our efforts and in our work. We know that the work that we do benefits people across the board within our community and region, and this county and city. And so we come before the city council tonight to ask for support for the work that we do. Mayor Botchinsky has been a part of our, kind of a fundraising and a task force team that we've put together, and has been aware of kind of our plan moving forward. And we have a team of people right now that are doing a lot of fundraising work on our behalf within the community, and, and looking to get support from the city, county, state to offset the other half of the costs that we're looking for. So we, I would entertain any questions that you may have, but thank you for the partnerships that we've had over the years. And we look forward to continuing the great work that Safe Kids does.
Thank you. Mr. Weber?
Ms. Hansen, thanks for all your work over the years. I've been worried about Safe Kids, because understanding the, you know, challenges Altru is facing. So, Mr. Phelan, thanks for bringing this forward. Mayor, thanks for your involvement on this. I'll move approval.
Is there a second? Mr. Bean? Also a comment, Mr. Bean?
No, I was just going to say I'm aware of the program, too. It's been tremendously successful. You've done a great job, and I'm glad to be able to support it.
Uh, Mr. Cavami?
Was Safe Kids previously not funded by any government entities before?
No, we've been very blessed. Altru has been very generous in their support over the years. And like I said, most coalitions in the country do go out and they do fundraising with their city, county, state, different entities throughout the years. We've been very blessed that Altru has been able to provide that support in an ongoing way. That being said, Altru is still very, very supportive of the work that we do. And in moving forward, we'll continue to provide much in-kind support for the efforts. But they also know that we have other partners in which the work that we do benefits some of their missions and the work that, that they're tasked with. And so, to the extent that we can seek some financial support to help to carry that load a little bit, that's what we're here looking to do.
Perfect. And are you, through your other fundraising efforts, seeking five-year commitments as well? Is that pretty standard, or?
We are asking for five-year commitments. Now, that being said, if somebody is unsure about their ongoing ability to do that, and they offer us support for a year, or two years, or whatever, we're not going to turn that down by any means. But I think as an organization, we want to be able to focus our efforts on doing the injury prevention work that we find so critical, and not spend our time with the fundraising piece. So when we're out there making an ask, if we can ask for a commitment that's a little bit longer term, that affords us the ability to kind of get back to, you know, some of the injury prevention work that we want to focus on.
Sure, yeah, I agree. Your time is better spent doing those things.
Yeah.
That's all. No further questions.
Further discussion?
Sorry, Ms. Mock?
Oh, yes, Mr. Sandy.
Just wondering, what fund is the money coming from?
I believe general fund.
Whoops, sorry, I took my mask off. We would find, I'll work with Marine over the week here, now that we have a general consensus, and we will look, I'm thinking of a general fund, part of our general fund, as opposed to we, a lot of times we come here with 2163, our economic development fund. But I think in this case, we'll find it within our general fund budget. We'll get the details for you on Monday.
Okay. Mr. Sandy, anything further?
No, I'm a big supporter of Ms. Hansen's and the work that Safe Kids does, and I certainly will support funding, whether it's from general fund or economic development. Thank you, Mr. Phelan and Ms. Hansen.
Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item 211, Red River Valley Water Supply Project Interim Finance Agreement A and B Approval. Mr. Phelan?
Council Vice President Mock, this is one of our remaining significant large water projects. In the state of North Dakota, this is called one of the big three projects, Fargo Flood Protection, Minutet Flood Protection, and the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. This will be one project that probably discuss this upcoming session regarding bonding. And it should, we move forward with trying to move some of these large projects that are just named forward through a bonding process. So obviously, between Fargo Metro and Grand Forks Metro, we're some of the key stakeholders in this particular project as we're moving forward. It is a plus or minus about a $1.2 billion project, so it's real money. And so in order to get this project moving forward realistically with the, what's going on with oil prices and that sort of thing, we're going to have to find some sort of bonding strategy. And thankfully, we have senators like Holmberg, and we have representatives like Sanford that we're working with. So that's a good thing. Number two, a huge shout-out to Ken Bean. He serves on both as year representative on Lake Agassiz Water Authority, and he's also up for reelection. I think he's going to win because he's the only guy on the ballot for the garrison diversion group, too. So he serves us in both capacities in that. Finally, in the status report, I have a lot of the things that we've moved forward. These are interim finance agreements. These are to, as the word says, these are interim until we get to a final agreement moving forward with this project, with the state of North Dakota, with garrison diversion, and with the users. In the meantime, we've got to keep the project going, and so that's what the intent of these interim agreements are for. And so in the future, you will see what they call the project participation agreement. That will come in the future. These two agreements are in place for, to move forward with funds that were acquired in the '17 and '19, and the '19 to '21 bienniums. And those are stated, and that's a Series A and Series B moving forward. So what we're asking is for these interim agreements to get approved. They're all reimbursable types of agreements, meaning the money has to be spent, and then the, then they have to come back for reimbursement for the various entities. The cities of Fargo and Grand Forks have agreed to front-load the local cost share of these projects until there's better certainty on who's going to be part of the project. So that's why we only see Fargo and Grand Forks on these agreements. I'm going to have John Shockley as the Lake Agassiz Water Authority's attorney, and he's going to provide you a PowerPoint presentation. He's, he's, works for a firm out of West Fargo, Onstep Twitchell. He's going to join us. He's also the law wise general counsel. So he's done a terrific job supporting us along the way. Also want to give a shout-out to Joe here, our assistant city attorney, who's also provided support on this particular agreement. So with that, I'd have John take it away. And then with that, I'd be here for any questions. John will be here, obviously, from his office, and then Ken, who's been a huge supporter and a year representative on that. So with that, John, please go ahead.
Thank you, and good evening. Good evening, Vice President Mock and members of the committee as a whole. I'm going to go ahead and try to share my PowerPoint presentation. Sometimes there's glitches with technology, but just let me know if you can't hear me, or if you have any questions. Recognizing that you have a busy agenda, I'll try to run through the PowerPoint presentation fairly quickly, but if you have any questions, please feel free to stop and ask them. So can everybody see my screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and start the slideshow then. All right, I seem to be having an issue with my, my PowerPoint presentation tonight. So I'll just go screen by screen. So once again, my name's John Shockley. I serve as general counsel for Lake Agassiz Water Authority. I came before the Grand Forks City Council previously to walk through the cooperation agreement between Lake Agassiz Water Authority and Garrison Divergent regarding the construction of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And as the city administrator had noted, these two interim agreements, the Series A and Series B, that we'll be discussing tonight, are temporary agreements that are intended to allow Garrison to get started with some early out construction work. The early out construction work is necessary to preserve some permitting requirements and some other issues related to how does the project proceed with meeting the inlet and the outlet to the project, being some of the most critical construction portions for the project. Also, as the city administrator had noted, with the upcoming legislative session and the potential for bonding, in order to get the interim work going, we really needed to have some temporary financing agreements in place until the local share could be better financed by Garrison, and then also getting the end users to sign up for the project overall will help determine the final allocations of water among the end users. So once again, there are two financing agreements in front of you. One is through the early out construction work associated with the 2017 through 2019 biennium, and then the 2019 through 2021 biennium work. And the, each agreement, within the agreements, has a specific work that would be covered by the cost share. So the parties to the Series A agreement are the Garrison Divergent, Lake Agassiz, City of Fargo, and City of Grand Forks. And you may ask why the City of Fargo and the City of Grand Forks. They are the two major users of the water that would come from the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. The City of Fargo is representing Casper Water Users and the City of West Fargo in these agreements. So they take up the majority of the share of water and the majority of the costs that would be involved in these agreements. So the work that's included, just generally under the Series A work, is the Missouri River Intake Pumping Station, wet well, and some site development, a short transmission pipeline, and then the discharge structure and site development on the Cheyenne River. The total project budget for this work is about $13,000. about $13 million. Under the 2017 legislation, the cost share is, the state of North Dakota is paying 90% of the work, with the local share being 10%. The 10% local cost share is initially being financed by Fargo and Grand Forks. Once the project participation agreements are signed, Fargo and Grand Forks may seek reimbursement from other Lawa member entities. So for the percentage share of both Fargo and Grand Forks, it will go down as more users sign up. But that percent, currently, the percentage split is just split between Fargo and Grand Forks based upon CFS, cubic feet per second usage, with Fargo having about 77.2% of the cost, and Grand Forks having about 22.7% of the cost. And those numbers are really a product of Fargo representing West Fargo and Casper Water. So Grand Forks' share, under the 10% cost share agreement, the Series A, is up to $329,117. Under the Series B, the same parties that I listed before, and the work that's included is the work contemplated in the 2019 through 2021 budget. The total work budget currently is $7.5 million. It has initially been approved for up to $4.5 million. I would note that the State Water Commission met recently and did approve the distribution of funds for the project. And there was some indication about Garrison potentially coming back for some additional funding after the State Water Commission has had opportunity to determine end of the year what the budget projections versus the total amount of funds available to the State Water Commission. Under this Series B agreement, this follows the legislation from the 2019 through 2021 biennium. And under that legislation, the split was 75% state, 25% local. Once again, very similar to the Series A agreement. In fact, it's almost identical in that Grand Forks and Fargo can seek reimbursement from the other Lawa member entities after such time as the project participation agreements are signed. Once again, it's based upon the same exact split, with Fargo having 77.2% and Grand Forks having about 22.7%, which results in, if it, if the project ends up, ending up at $4.5 million or $7.5 million, it could go up to $427,000 to $219,000 for Grand Forks. Garrison will notify Lawa if the expenses would exceed $4.5 million. We would then, in turn, notify Grand Forks immediately. The Series B agreement contains a agreement termination provision, that if Garrison is unable to secure the agreements with Lawa members of at least 99 CFS in the aggregate, the Series B agreement is null and void. And that was really to give a, the Series A gets the work started, and the Series B really gives some time for Garrison and Lawa to work together with many of the member entities to determine which of the member entities are going to participate, and how much allocation they're going to take. Other provisions that are common to both agreements: if no construction contracts are entered into, or if the project is delayed indefinitely, the remaining unused funds would be returned to Fargo and Grand Forks pro rata, in accordance with their shares. Fargo and Grand Forks may use any available funds to make the payments. One of the specific requirements of the cooperation agreement between Lawa and Garrison is that none of Lawa's member entities are required to bond for any of the local share. And so there's no requirement that you capitalize or finance this money. And moving forward, after the A and B series agreements, the intent of Lawa would be to work with Garrison so that they have a solid financial plan to, number one, provide the local share bonding that's required through Garrison, and then determine what the monthly charge would be associated with that local share. That's still a work in progress, and it's very much, you need the, the local share that's being allocated to the other political subdivisions to be determined first. Garrison would send invoices to Fargo and Grand Forks with the amounts due within 30 days, subject to the provisions of both agreements. And Garrison is responsible for the operations and maintenance of the constructed work, and operations and maintenance would be billed separately to Lawa. The agreements are obviously a little bit more involved than the PowerPoint presentation, but I wanted to make sure that I gave a good overview of both of the agreements. They have been reviewed by the Grand Forks City Attorney's Office, and also by the Fargo City Attorney's Office. I don't know the date that the Fargo City Commission is going to take up approval, but I'm anticipating that will be relatively soon. I can certainly answer any questions from the Committee, the whole, that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Vice President Mark, I can ask. Fargo's on the same timeline we are on, so they're planning to approve this at their next city commission meeting, which would be next week, Monday, the 2nd. So we're on a similar path. Also, I would point out that East Grand Forks has proportional shares incorporated into ours also. So of our total, they're about 13% of ours. So you may not know this, but we do have an interconnect, not only wastewater, but water. And so that would, we can serve them with about a million gallons per day. And so their proportional share is contained within, within our share. And so we'd have to work out an intercity agreement on that proportional share. Finally, on the funding side, and I said, you know, they have to spend the money and then seek reimbursement, we would use our, some of our water enterprise, we have some of it budgeted, depending on when it comes in. Or if not, with that, we do use some of our, either construction cash or just plain or cash balance in the water enterprise fund. Eventually, as Mr. Shockley talked about, this will have to be a debt service project. It'll be debt service through the Garrison Divergent in the state of North Dakota. And we'll look like, as John said, more like a utility customer. We'll work pay on a certain measurement, and have to work that into our ongoing annual budget. So with that, so with that, Vice President Mark, I would hand it back to City Council for any conversation.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Veen?
Well, first, yeah, I think, first of all, thank you, John, for making the presentation. He's been working really hard on the agreements that we've had. This is a, just a very significant project for the, for the city of Grand Forks. It's really part of a, first, it's the first construction of a $1.2 billion pipeline to deliver water from the Missouri River to the Cheyenne. And like we said, in times of drought, this is what's going to be available for our water supply. And it's, it's really a major insurance policy for us. And these two, two water service agreements that we're talking about are the critical first steps. The idea is, is that we will need to be under construction this coming year, and that in and of itself, has been over 20 years in the making. So it's, it's really significant. And cities of Fargo and Grand Forks are stepping up to pay that non-state share that we were talking about here. And so with that, I would make a motion to approve both, both agreements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Weber? Any further comments?
If I may.
Sure.
Under normal circumstances, this would be the centerpiece for the night. This is a tremendously important project. Mr. Veen, you've helped me to understand, historically, the Red River, within a handful of years, has gone from flooding to drought, where people could walk across the river. And so this is incredibly important. Thanks for all of your work. And I know both you and, and Mr. Feeland have made multiple trips down to Fargo, and meetings in Bismarck, Fargo, et cetera. So, Mr. Shockley, thanks for the detailed presentation, and look forward to voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cavani?
I'm, I'm just curious, why it is that it's only Fargo and Grand Forks that are involved at this point? Is, is there some reasoning behind that?
Council Vice President Mark and Councilmember Cavani, I think right now, the project is driven mostly by Fargo and the metro, secondary to Grand Forks. You know, if these are approved as part of a larger project, some, the, the remaining partners, and I think I attached kind of the proportional shares of the rest, are so small, I'm not going to say insignificant, but they're so much smaller as a proportion. So really, this is about Fargo and Grand Forks stepping up with the state of North Dakota, and then kind of working with the other smaller users to see if they're going to be part of the project. So to get the project going and not having every last entity on, because it's kind of a de minimis kind of thing, is that since we're such a large portion of the project, let's, let's move forward, and then kind of backtrack with the other smaller users.
Sure, that makes sense. And so if I understand correctly, if for some reason the project does not move forward, then any of the money that we spent is, we're at risk at that. Is that correct?
We are. Fargo, Grand Forks are at risk, along with the state of North Dakota, as either they're 90% share, or they're 75% share.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yeah, one quick question. Mr. Veen, this is an expensive project, 1.2 billion. But if we were to go have a drought year, what's the estimated economic impact to our, just our city and the region?
I got, I believe that over a 10-year period, a 1930-style drought would be about $24 billion. It's about 2.4 billion per year economic impact to the state of North Dakota, if a project like this were not constructed. I'd have to go back and maybe check, double-check those numbers. But it, it was originally a little over $20 billion for a 10-year period. And now, with cost of living, it's just increased. So it's, that's why the state of North Dakota is staying actively involved, because that not only impacts us locally, it impacts the entire state, as well as what happens to Fargo and Grand Forks.
Any further comments or questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 212, Grand Forks City Hall Renovations Project Bid Approval.
Council Vice President Mark and Committee members. Sorry, I attached this last item late in the day, as I just received the, all the multiple bids. So I apologize for that. If I could kind of give you a, kind of a draft overview, as you recall, we're going to move forward with addressing some needs that we had in City Hall. And so this particular project that I speak of is to renovate the former mayor, city minister's office, and create an office for planning and community development. Number two, this is to provide additional space on the first floor for the finance department, and also then to provide a conference room hall on the first floor. And so if you see a schematic on the first floor, that's generally what that is. And so it's basically to expand and extend where finance is. On the former city minister, mayor's office, that's generally kind of a, a complete renovation of that space, with offices and other office spaces in there. On the third floor is IT, and that's to provide them additional office space, and then also to reconfigure both our server room and their break room, and do some modifications there. When I was last here, I discussed, we had set aside about $400,000 for a City Hall project. The bids did come in with our construction manager at $380,291. I just received those today. There is some more refinement, and I think when I say refinement, not refinement up, hopefully refinement down on those. So they'll be working throughout this week to try to look at where they can shave some expenses from those. They did receive significant competitive bids in all the various, and I have attached that in all the different areas of bidding this particular project, moving forward. With that, I know this is soon. We'll do some additional work. We'll finalize this stuff, bring it in advance on Monday, November 2nd. And we see this as kind of the first project, doing some projects in City Hall, getting people right-sized. This will allow, as you recall, engineering now, and in building inspections now, to have further room, because planning and community development will be going down on the first floor, being more the front door of City Hall. And they'll allow building inspections and engineering to expand in the, in the former spaces, moving forward. Probably next year, and we talked about this last week, is we'll probably look at council chambers and doing some upgrades next year, as part of continuous trying to update our City Hall. I think we can get everybody in the right places here in City Hall, work on this room next year. And then, of course, over at the Herald Building, as you recall, we're not going to put any city staff over there, for say. And we've submitted our EDA grant, and hopefully we hear some good news on that. So that's kind of our strategy moving forward. More details to come through the week, but that's a general overview of this. We're asking for approval.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Mr. Weber?
As you proceed with this work, I hope that we'll also keep in mind the indoor air quality studies, but I'll move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Weigel, any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 213, COVID-19 Updates. And just as a reminder, if you are here to speak to 214, we're asking that people fill out speaker cards, and I'm guessing you can give them to Greta, maybe, in the back?
Yep, we can bring them right up here.
Okay.
I think we would work to, if, if you want to fill, for the next item, if you want to fill out a card that I hope are in back, and as you come up to address the City Council, you can just drop it right here in the basket.
Okay, thank you. Item 213, COVID-19 Updates.
Okay, I'll kind of, just kind of narrate some of these items that we're going to go on. But I want to first really ask Mayor Bochensky, who was in Bismarck today with, on the invitation of Governor Burgum. Dr. Burks was in town. And so I asked Mayor Bochensky if he could provide us an overview in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Feeland. Yes, it's been kind of a long day already, Bismarck and back, and taking that meeting, but it was definitely very insightful. You know, they had a lot of good data. They showed us how this coronavirus really has been in the south, and it's worked its way through the north. And now we're hitting our surge in the Midwest, similar to what happened in Florida, Louisiana, Mississippi. And seeing the migration was definitely interesting. I'm going to have to get my hands on some of those slides. There is some positives. There's obviously some negatives, too, as we're hitting numbers here. Therapeutics, you know, Mrs. Lawa, this is coming from Dr. Burks herself. Therapeutics are getting better every day. They've cut down the fatality rate by 65%, but we can certainly do better. Hospitals are treating people and being able to send them home far faster, so the hospital turnover has accelerated greatly. There's, they don't truly believe that the virus has mutated to become weaker. They just think we're finding better ways to treat this, and finding some people sooner when they have less severe symptoms. One thing she did point out, she generally noticed that once someone's had someone close to them be infected and get sick, they've then tended to personally present safer behaviors. I think that kind of makes common sense, but I think it's also something to think about. Throughout the US, you know, they've really noticed the community spread isn't coming from public spaces. Public spaces have been some of the safest areas in a lot of parts of the US. I think we can probably do a better job locally in that. Generally, it's been coming from outside the workplace and outside the schools, from social activities with friends and families. They said it's, she said it's, you know, it's a combination of having tens of different smaller, smaller groups involved in social activities, and then going to a wedding. It's, it's more of a series of smaller interactions, which certainly means that, you know, whatever we do tonight, we need to be more diligent in private settings. She also expressed some concern about, you know, the region and its, reaction to this has been, has been slower. And I think the main theme is, in the Midwest, it's, it's been difficult. We've been in this fight for so long, and, and sort of been waiting for it to come, waiting for it to come. And that created a lot of fatigue from being cautious and restricted. It's, it's kind of led, led people to be sort of less prudent in their behaviors over time. Let's see, also Chancellor Haggarad said that the India-US system hasn't had a serious hospitalization or death throughout the entire North Dakota university system, which I think is great. Schools are some of the safest places for our kids to be, and for our college students to be, because the spread isn't happening there. So we certainly need to do what we can to make sure that those stay open. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, late today, I did attach this Grand Forks Weekly Average Bullet. That was, we've been doing some wastewater testing along with other major cities. And so thank you to Melanie Parby in our Water Works Department, also Todd Metelski at our wastewater treatment plant. He only usually gets shined on when we're talking about Red River Valley Refinery, but he does more than that. And so they've been sampling at the wastewater treatment plant. And then, I would say, one thing the state's been a little slow on, you know, we do a lot of work, they do the analytics, and so we finally asked, hey, well, what are the results? And so that graph really does show, it follows the upward trend and the downward trend. If you look at our wastewater effluent, that is, is interesting. I looked at the last week, and all I got was a message. And I'll try to keep this updated, because I know Councilmember Mark, you are really interested in this. It, it sounds like the trend is going down. I don't have the details, but the person that's been doing some of the analytics said the most recent, it's, it appears- the most recent, it appeared to be having gone down from where the peak was this past week. So the kind of graph, I think, ends last week, and so we'll try to keep getting that updated, and it's not so much the sampling, it's in the analytics, it's actually getting it back to people so they can observe what's going on. So that's what that issue is. Number two, Michael Doolitz, our dashboard operator, is at the Grand Forks School Board meeting tonight, they're having a meeting about what they should do, so he's not there. We did attach the dashboard, it's been pretty consistent over the last week or so, so we didn't intend to go over that, but we did attach that. And then finally, Debbie Swanson, our public health director, thought it might be a good idea to go over contact tracing, and so we have one of our public health members, Ashley Nelson, that's going to do a PowerPoint presentation, and I see Dr. Omar Kostas is here. Not only do we do contact tracing, which is really smart for us to do, we have to give a big shout out to UND, as they hired their own contact tracers. I know the Grand Forks Public Schools is doing contact tracing, and so one of the reasons why we're still going forward is that we took that into our own hands, the contact tracing, they have been doing that, we did, we were all upon some Bismarck agency to do that for us. So with that, I'd ask Ashley to go through the PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, Vice President Mock and members of the council. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Ashley Nelson, I am the COVID-19 Contact Investigations Project Coordinator at Grand Forks Public Health. I came into this role in May, but have been part of the tracing effort since the beginning in March. So like I said, in March, we began the contact tracing. Grand Forks Public Health was in the contact tracing efforts as soon as the first case of COVID-19 hit Grand Forks County. We immediately had 15 Grand Forks Public Health staff that came from pretty much every division of the department. So we had nurses, environmental health, family health, across the board, we were pulling in all of our staff in incident command structure to be helping with contact tracing. And in doing so, they were prioritizing the contact tracing over some of the normal duties. Looking forward to now, we do have eight core full-time contact tracers that have been hired on for full-time. We still have 15, what I call our supplemental tracers, from the other divisions, that will still help us when we are in a surge or when we need help on evenings and weekends. We also have two part-time employees that help us with the weekend work. We're still hiring as our need continues to rise, but we really have a great team that we're working with right now to get a lot done for our community. I thought it would be good to tell you guys a little bit about how we schedule contact tracing. I don't know that this is something that is very apparent for everybody who isn't involved. We do make calls from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week, and that does include holidays. On weekends, we staff about eight people per, eight people for the whole weekend, excuse me, from Friday evening to Sunday. We also have the COVID school response team that Mr. Fieland alluded to. They are on call 24/7, and when I say 24/7, I mean literally 24/7. It is not uncommon to get calls at midnight or 5:00 a.m., depending on when these questions are coming in. We have three staff that do that full-time, we have three additional staff that do help to fill any need that they may have. So one of the things that I think all contact tracers can be probably most proud of is our ability to adapt. There are changes constantly and rapidly. One of the first things that we noticed is we went from tracing on paper forms in March to in April, we were able to move to electronic records. The state then started hiring tracers for around the state, which was a huge advantage to the state at large. They, with all working remotely, they are able to help with whatever regions are in need, and they help us get through our cases and our contact tracing in a timely manner, which is the biggest, the way that contact tracing can have the biggest impact is if we are timely. We also navigated quite a few changes when university, schools, and sports came back into session. And then we have had different changes made at the state level that definitely affected us on the front line. One of those being the change to masked and unmasked close contacts, and then the most recent being the abbreviated case investigations. The abbreviated case investigations were needed because of the influx of cases in our state from last week, it was leading up to last week, but last week is really when the backlog hit us hard, and they were able to get through a backlog of over 1,000 cases in just a matter of a couple of days with these abbreviated case investigations. With the change in investigations, the NDA guard went from assisting with the actual contacts in the contact tracing to helping, to helping catch up with the positive cases that needed their notifications and the correct education to get through their isolation and protect their friends and family that may have been contacts. Across the state, they did these abbreviated case investigations by really focusing on the cases themselves and providing them with the education and different fact sheets that they could then disperse to their close contacts, household contacts, workplaces, anywhere that would be important for them to make notifications. In Grand Forks specifically, so Grand Forks Public Health, along with the UND campus team, we decided that we didn't want to lose the contact tracing part of the investigations, because we know it's important to quarantine individuals at risk before they become ill. So then we are mitigating further spread. So both the UND campus team, as well as Grand Forks Public Health, did redouble, I suppose, to the contact tracing part. Again, it did need to become a bit abbreviated due to just the increase in numbers and wanting to keep up in that timely fashion, but we have been able to maintain courtesy calls to close contacts, which we felt was important for somebody to have an expert on the other end of the line to answer any questions that they may have. So far, we have continued to do this. The state is still, in general, they are still continuing on with the abbreviated case investigations without contacting close contacts. So going a little bit more into the numbers, April 24th was our first day of electronic records. I don't have any good way to pull back to when we were still on paper. Since April 24th, we have seen 3,861 cases, positive cases of COVID-19 in Grand Forks County. 1,533 of those were worked up by Grand Forks Public Health personnel, for a total of 3,382 total clients. So that's going to include the close contacts that we were following day-to-day, but like I mentioned in the last slide, we're no longer following them day-to-day, but we are giving them that courtesy call, so that they know that they were in fact a close contact and have somebody on the other line with accurate information, should they have any questions. The biggest groups that we focus on in Grand Forks Public Health Department are, we want to take all cases that are under 18, so we can make sure that the proper protocol is happening in daycares and schools. We also take any special interest groups, any sort of cluster that's identified, we'll want to make sure that we're keeping them in-house, as well as any congregant settings, nursing homes, correctional centers, anything of that nature, we would like to keep in the department, just because we want to keep a pulse on what is happening in our community and be able to address anything that we notice with the best expertise. So at our current workload, we have 22 staff with active cases, and we are currently working with 220 positive cases. This last weekend, 301 cases were reported between Friday the 23rd to Sunday the 25th, and Grand Forks Public Health was able to work up 107 of those cases, and that was with seven staff on schedule for the weekend. I really wanted to point out an example that I think showcases the really amazing workforce that we have at the department. Last Monday, we had a record number of cases, which was 192 reported for Grand Forks County, and of those, Grand Forks Public Health was able to keep 83 of these to work with our personnel. 79 of those were college-aged, who were then assigned to the UND campus team, and so if we take out the college-aged kids that we wouldn't normally be assigned anyways, we were able to cover 74% of the cases that would be eligible for us to choose on, without having to rely on the state. So this was really big. Again, we're local, we know what's going on in our community for the most part, we want to keep as many local cases with local tracers as possible, so that we can serve them and hook them up with any appropriate resources that they may need during their isolation period. I also wanted to give a shout out to the UND teams. There are two. First, the campus team, and they are the ones that are routinely signed those college-age cases. So they take anybody roughly in that 18 to 25-year-old range. They also assist with any follow-up if we identify another UND-affiliated case, whether it be staff or faculty or otherwise involved with UND. As I think we all know, UND is almost like a little city of its own, so it's been really nice to have their UND experts to be able to work with all the different interactions that we maybe wouldn't even know what to ask about. We also have a team out of the MPH program, and they are overseen by Ashley Evenson, the public health program manager, and their case manager is Katerina, who is an MPH student. They have 70 active tracers, with 10 that are currently in shadowing, which means they should be able to independently trace on their own very soon here. They are shift workers, so the 70, almost 80, is an incredible number for us to have. They are not all working at one time. They have been in partnership with Grand Forks Public Health and the state since March, and they also are staffing according to need, and they were a huge asset in getting through the backlog last week. So with that, I just wanted to share a few pictures to remind everybody that the contact tracing is done by real humans with families. Everybody has remained very dedicated, and with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Fieland?
If I could say, Ashley is not a self-proclaimed rock star, but anyone that works with her calls her that, which is the more important. The latter half is the more important, and so she does a wonderful job, and not just to point out, but the whole team. But it's always nice to see all the great and talented people that we have working at the city of Grand Forks, not just in City Hall, but through all of our buildings in the city of Grand Forks, and Ashley is a great example of that, so I'm very thankful that she works for the city of Grand Forks.
Fair enough so, and it has been a trying time for public health, so thank you to all for all your efforts.
If I may make a quick comment. You mentioned Ashley Evenson, just for what it's worth, she's also part of the Hugo's Mask Wearing Project, she was one of the principals on that. There is some ongoing positive news, despite a lot of the negative press we're getting globally. One really positive thing is the testing levels, the only leading indicator where we're still green. So this is fantastic, and thank you Governor Burgum for that. Also, contact tracing, we've just discussed, and thanks UND for the contact tracing and their support there. Hospital numbers are yellow, not green, but yellow. We continue to have some good news there, but of course, that's a lagging indicator. By the time our hospitals are overrun, then we're in trouble, but right now, that's not green, but yellow. I did want to ask about the wastewater chart that you showed. Could we bring that back up? Because I had a question specifically about it.
It wasn't up, but it's on the agenda. I don't have it up, but...
So this goes back to August, looks like we started some record-keeping, late August on that. And generally, the wastewater line is, has been lower than the clinical cases, indicating that, you know, it was perhaps under-reporting the situation in the community. The last two weeks, last week or so, that line has shot up above clinical cases. That would seem to indicate that the situation is actually worse in the community than the clinical cases would indicate. Is, am I reading that correctly?
Council Vice President Mock and council member, whoever. I would hesitate to draw any conclusions, other than the line kind of follows the case count, just because, you know, we just got this afternoon, they're doing, North Dakota State University is doing it on behalf of the North Dakota Department of Health, and so I think if we want to, maybe another kind of an update from them, I think that would be important. And I just wanted to start getting the information, you know, we're sending all these samples, and at least we have a graph now. And the only other comment I heard is, they're trying to get it updated, but it looked, they were just presenting that it perhaps is going to look better in the future, from what they were seeing.
We have a couple months, but maybe not quite enough data yet to be drawing strong conclusions there. Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mock?
Yes, Mr. Vian.
Yeah, Mr. Fieland, on the health officer's risk score, I've been asked a couple times about this. The hospital capacity on there, it comes up yellow, at a score of 1, and yet everything, I read a lot in the paper, there's all these examples and numbers that said that the hospitals across North Dakota are at capacity, and there's very little capacity left. But I'm not for sure how that relates to the number that we have, is, do you know what that rationale is? Because this doesn't match what at least we read in the paper, and that's what I've been asked anyway.
Yeah. Council Vice President Mock and council member Vian, I won't speak on behalf of Alter Health System, but I think yellow to them means they're good, busy, if I can define it that way, is that they have all elective surgeries going on, they're able to admit anyone who needs to come to Alter, and they're able to support the COVID patients that they have. And so they have beds available, they're able to staff them, they're able to do elective surgeries, and they're able to see peoples in clinics, at least in Alter. And so that's what yellow means to them. I think if they were lower than yellow, that would mean they have too much capacity. If they're a little bit above it, I think that's the concern. So we've been in yellow when we read, when they redefined. Previous, you know, two months ago, they were probably in green. Their yellow is what they've maintained over the last, you know, at least two, three months, since they kind of went to a new measuring stick. We do get updates from them on an ongoing basis, and it seems like we've kind of plateaued with COVID-related patients, and even during this current spike that we've been on, and some of the lagging, everyone's worried about the hospitals are lagging indicators. But it appears that they're managing it quite well, and they say generally they're busy, but they're not COVID-busy, they're just busy because there's a lot of health issues that are going through the community and our region. And so sometimes we think of Alter just Grand Forks, but they're, we find out they're serving this wider region. And even on COVID patients, a lot of times, the majority are not even from Grand Forks County. So I think yellow means that they're, it's good, but they manage it day-to-day, hour-to-hour regarding capacity.
If I could follow up with that, I know capacity, hospital capacity is more than just bed capacity, it's staffing, it's equipment, it's all of the things that you just mentioned. And so I'm still trying to understand, they haven't had to go on any diversion, and they have plenty of staff for the COVID patients, is that what we know right now?
Council Vice President Mock and council member Vian, I wouldn't describe, they have plenty. They do have close contacts, people that are in quarantine, they find that they have sufficient staff. However, I think with all of us, you know, it's a day-to-day struggle to make sure they can maintain, but because they've remained in yellow means that they're continuing to service Grand Forks in the region. Not that they're not diverting when it makes sense, just like other systems divert, but the fact that they've remained in yellow means they feel like they're managing the health system well.
Yeah, no, and I'm not challenging them managing their health system or what they're trying to do, I'm just trying to understand the yellow, the number that we have in here, and if it's truly indicative of where we are, you know, is... truly indicative of where we are, you know, is the question that I have. So, thank you.
I think Alter has been one of the bright spots of how they've managed, not only the non-COVID-related, but the COVID. And I think that's, that has been a success story to date, and how they've been able to manage all the populations that are going through Alter Health System.
Any further comments, questions? Thank you. All right.
I think we're to two fourteen now, if you...
Okay. So two fourteen, mask requirement order next. Mr. Phelan?
Yep. Vice President Mock and members of the community, the whole. I'm just going to summarize what we have attached. The mayor did sign a emergency order for all public facilities, buildings, rolling stock, to include city buses. I've attached that to you. So we've added mask requirements for some time for city employees, and on Friday, he required that for all people that are visiting our city facilities, or if you're on a city bus. There is not a penalty per se for that, but there is a requirement. Number two, we attached Mr. Gosdard's memo that discussed if you want to move forward with a mask mandate, a requirement of some sort, that he would be available to kind of step through that if you're interested this evening. I did reach out on behalf of the City Council and Mayor Bochensky, and sought some input from two of our community or institutional partners that we've been working on, week to week. And so we have an encouraging letter from Dr. Terry Brann from the public schools, and again, he can't be here tonight because they have a meeting of their own. And then I'm thankful that Dr. Amikost is here from the University of North Dakota, and he also provided an attached letter regarding mask requirements. And what would be helpful both to U N D and the school district, and I know that's been very important, and the mayor and the city council to keep schools moving forward, so that's why we recorded that. And then I'm thankful that Dr. Amikost even is willing to be here and respond as you would like. And then finally, there's a draft resolution. Thank you to Councilmember Doppler for your work on that. She came up with a draft. We reviewed it. Mr. Gosdard provided some suggestive edits. She sent it back to us, and then I hit final edit. I put a draft stamp on, that's what you have here in front of you. I think it's all similar to what we've heard a lot about with the City of Fargo and the City of Minot, except there is some penalties, some of those requirements that are not in the City of Fargo, nor the City of Minot. And I think when I communicated with Councilmember Doppler, I suggested, well, why don't we just put the whole thing in there? And it's easier to edit out than to add in. And so in that spirit, that's why there's some additional things that Fargo chose not to put in, nor Minot, because I know I've already heard, hey, how are we getting enforced? Do we really want to put a penalty on this thing? And when she and I discussed, I think our thought was, well, it's easier to edit out than to add back in. So in that spirit, and to start the conversation. So with that, Counsel Vice President Mock, how do we want to move forward with the public and city council discussion?
Does anybody want to make a comment before we go to the public discussion?
Yes. If I could ask a question about the emergency order, because the issue of enforcement has come up already, and it will be an important part of our discussion. What are the intentions for enforcement on city buses and at the polling places next week?
I would defer to city interim president.
Well, as far as voting locations, that's an exception. If you're there for voting, the reason that is, is that to be a qualified elector, I can't include having a mask on to vote. There are statutory requirements, eighteen, a resident, and I don't, we can't change that statute for voting. So that's an exception. As far as enforcement is concerned, the one, there is a provision in there that we can ask the people to leave the facility if they don't have a mask on, if you don't fit with one of the exceptions.
Very good. Thank you.
Counsel Vice President Mock, on the last, on the resolution that I worked with, Councilmember Doppler, I don't know if you had any follow-up words. I tried to summarize what we worked on, but I don't want to steal all your words if Councilmember Doppler had any follow-up.
Did you want to speak?
I'll certainly have comments, but there are quite a few people in the room that it seems would like to make public comment, and you've hung in there with us this entire time, and so I appreciate you engaging in this process. If it would be okay with you, I think it would be courteous of their time to let them speak first, because I'm sure this conversation will go on.
Okay. So then I have one comment card. In an effort to be fair to everyone, because I want to be fair and equitable, we're going to ask everybody limit to three minutes, and I will let you know when you're at two minutes and thirty seconds, and then we will thank you for participating in the discussion at three minutes. So I will start off with Cody Harris, because that's who I have. And then after that, if you can fill out a comment card and come up and say what you'd like to say, and then you can drop it off there so that staff has it for the record. But, Mr. Harris, we'll start with you.
Thank you very much for letting me come out here and just kind of speak my mind. I appreciate what you guys do. I just wanted to put my opinion out there. I would, I would like you guys to allow local businesses and people to determine what they would like to do in their local business as well. I've been to several businesses that don't necessarily require it, but would recommend it. People obviously feel different about it, depending on who you ask. I just would like you to leave it in their hands to determine either the person that's going into the store, or the business owner as well. I guess that's about all I have. I just would like you to just leave it up to them in this particular matter. Thank you.
And for the record, that was thirty-five seconds, so that was very efficient, just as a, just as a reference.
Please come forward to the podium, if you want to speak.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Vice President Mock, members of the council, city leaders, thank you for having me here. My name is Matthew Turnus. I'm the Student Body President at the University of North Dakota. Back in September, our student government passed a resolution similar to the resolution before you all today, asking for the city to consider and implement a face-covering requirement that is consistent with that of the university. When that resolution was written, there were around two hundred cases in the county. I checked earlier today, and it was seven hundred and fifty-six in one month, and those are new cases. That growth is shocking and concerning for a lot of my constituents. You know, I actually just recently got out of isolation myself. I tested positive a few weeks ago. I'm cleared by the state, don't worry. In my isolation, it was tough. As my student health doctors describe, I'm young and healthy, but COVID spared me no symptoms, or gave me all the symptoms. Fever, cough, shortness of breath, some of which still sticks with me today, if you notice my breathing pattern is a little off. But I assure you, I'm fine. Just down the hall from me was a friend of mine who had no symptoms, and I think that's one of the scariest parts of COVID, is that there's such a wide array of effects on people. When I think of masks, I think of my fellow classmates wanting so desperately to stay on campus and in the community. When I think of masks, I think of my neighbor who had a conversation with the other day, who expressed that they're worried about job closure because of COVID. They need to work every day to make their bills, to pay their bills. When I think of masks, I think of my mom and dad, who have underlying health conditions and who I've only seen three or four times since the pandemic started. When I think of all the strategies we can employ to keep our neighbors safe, this piece of cloth around my face is the first one. A consistent policy implemented by the city provides clarity, low risk for confusion, and a consistent standard amidst our community. I'm sure, like you all and myself as elected officials, we swore an oath when we started our terms, to always act in the best interests of our constituents. And I know you all will do that in this discussion, and I'm excited to see the discussion move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. My name is Mark Trappke. I'm the president of the Northern Valley Labor Council, AFL-CRO, the unions. And what I'm here tonight is that us, as the AFL-CRO, we represent thousands of members in the City of Grand Forks here, and it's our duty to make sure that our membership is protected as well as it can be protected. We also represent thousands and thousands of workers who don't have a right to be in a union, but need a voice, need a voice, and we speak for them. We also live in a community, and our community is Grand Forks. And as members of a community, we have a right, but we also have a duty and a moral obligation to speak the truth. And for us, you know, Mr. Mayor, City Council, the truth is, the mask mandate works. It's there to protect. The other thing is, is some people say, well, there's no fines, fees, or assessments. Okay. But the city, you as elected officials, have a moral obligation to step forward and lead. It's your position, you need to use that moral authority and step forward and do the right thing. There's a thousand reasons that you could come up with not to lead, but the people of this city, and each one of your wards, and you, Mr. Mayor, who was elected by all the population, ask you to lead. And so I want to make it perfectly clear that we, as a labor movement, want to wear masks. We're not worried about the fee or anything like that, but what we do want is social justice. And I know these things ain't easy, you know, but we do have a duty to make sure all citizens of our great city are right, that we don't have to read about people catching COVID or people dying in our nursing homes. And so I encourage you all to step forward and do the right thing, and pass a mayor's resolution, and I thank you for doing the city resolution, Mr. Mayor, but also our city council, and so thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Other folks that want to come forward?
I appreciate what's been said about city leaders, public leaders, and their duty to lead properly. I don't want it to get confused, though, that leading and doing the right thing is the same as taking away someone else's choice. As I stand here tonight, to be honest, I feel disrespected because of this ordinance before us. The government relies upon my strength and decision-making as a regular taxpayer so that I can help fund its programs, but it apparently doesn't trust my decision-making when it comes to a virus with a ninety-nine-plus percent survival rate. I'm allowed to make my own decisions when it comes to buying a house, or buying a car, having a family, choosing a career, and even electing public officials, but I'm apparently not allowed to make my own decisions regarding protecting my health and that of my family from a virus with a ninety-nine-plus percent survival rate. I'd like to remind the council that you work for us, and you weren't elected to make these decisions for us. The effectiveness of lockdowns, masks, and the rest is highly debatable. It is disrespectful and overbearing to make our life decisions for us when the rationale is, at best, hotly debated by experts the world over. I call on Councilwoman Mock, Mayor Bochensky, and the rest of the city council to let local businesses and individuals make their own decisions for their own future. We pay taxes like adults. Let us protect ourselves like adults, too. And as a gentle reminder, your decision tonight may affect your own future in politics. Thank you.
Thank you. And did we have a name for the record? Do we have it for...
Yes. I put the card here. My name is Ethan Custer. Thank you.
We'll have people keep coming forward, please. If you can, state your name for the record, and then drop the card so that staff knows for the minutes.
My name is David Waterman. I live on Cottonwood Street, graduated from the University of North Dakota with a degree in, Bachelor of Science degree in industrial technology. And during the course of my studies, I studied industrial safety and personal protective equipment, more commonly known as P P E. I've written scripts, produced a film on the proper use and maintenance of P P E for a large company in Minnesota. I'm a firm believer in P P E. It's important that we protect our bodies and that we protect other people who are in dangerous situations. But I want you to know that there's no such thing as a universal P P E. So for example, these rubber gloves are considered P P E in the context of taking someone's blood. It protects the nurse or the phlebotomist from getting somebody else's bodily fluids on them. These are not considered P P E in the context of using an arc welder. They don't work for that. So all P P E is designed to work within a particular context. And with that in mind, I want to address the issue of cloth masks. So the experts at the CDC has put out this publication called Operational Considerations for Personal Protective Equipment in the Context of Global Supply Shortages for Coronavirus Disease, is what they say. Non-medical fabric masks are not considered P P E, and their ability to protect healthcare workers is currently unknown. Some studies suggest it may lead to a false sense of protection and even increase influenza-like illness relative to wearing a medical mask. World Health Organization Advice on the Use of Masks in the Context of COVID-19. Context of COVID-19 cloth masks is the subject at hand. They state a non-medical, which they refer to as a, which is also a fabric mask, a non-medical mask is neither a medical device nor personal protective equipment. OSHA, NIOSH, and the CDC put out this publication, Hospital Respiratory Protection Program Toolkit, and they state this. Face masks by design do not seal tightly to the wearer's face. Therefore, they allow unfiltered air to easily flow around the sides of the face mask into the breathing zone and respiratory tract of the wearer. In addition, the materials used for face masks are not regulated by their ability to filter particles that are, and are known to vary greatly between models. This makes it possible for small particles to pass through or around the face mask and to be inhaled by the wearer. This is in bold print. This is why they are not considered respiratory protection. Face masks do not, all caps, provide the wearer with a reliable level of protection from inhaling smaller particles, including those emitted into the room, air by a patient who is exhaling or coughing. I've left this for you. I strongly recommend it. One of the staff members has this. There's a copy for everyone here. It is called "On the Purported Efficacy and Safety of Face Mask Use to Stop Transmission of COVID-19," written by Daniel Stanislawski, Ph.D. He holds a Ph.D. in Biochemistry and Molecular Biology. I strongly urge that you study this document thoroughly. It's a seven-page document with ten pages of referenced footnotes. It's exhaustively produced, and I would urge you to look at that carefully before you make any decisions going forward about face masks. Thank you very much.
Other comments?
Hello, Council Mock and Councilmembers here. My name is Scott. My last name is Reinhardt, and I'm like a small, you know, business owner... My last name is Reinhardt, and I'm like a small, you know, business owner here in town. I just want to let you know that what if masks really aren't working? The reason that I'm asking this is CDC has done a couple of studies on this. One was with 1,400 people, and another one, this last study they did with, they surveyed 154 people. Now, the 154 people that were surveyed, this is on October 12th, the previous 14 days before the illness began, 71% of them reported that they wore masks on a always basis. And another 14%, they said they wore masks often, which adds up to 85%. Now, mask, if you take a look at it, you see a pen, right? You see this little tip on the pen here, right? Everyone see the little tip? Now, the coronavirus is 1,000th size of that little tip on that pen. It's that 1,000th size of a piece of hair. Now, if you take a look at masks, it's like that, it's just, it's not a good way to, I don't think it really protects against the, actually, the, like, you know, coronavirus. And now, we were getting to cases, right? And as far as with the cases that we have here, how many of those cases with the healthier, how many of those cases were actually sick? How many, what type of symptoms do they have? Those are the things we should track. I mean, are they having, are they having a couple of symptoms? Are they having a few symptoms? You're asking all these questions. Why don't we, why don't we track those? Because how many of those cases, or 300 and some cases for this last week, and how many of them don't even have any, have any, you know, sickness out of it? Do we know those, those answers? Probably not. We should be knowing those answers. Because like, like another guy said, 99.7% survival rate, why are we locking down everything? And those people that end up in the hospital, there are people like Dr. Bartlett out of Texas. He came up with a treatment program that's called Bunesinide. And, and so this one, if you go to bunesinideworks.com, he has a treatment. He's treated over 400 COVID patients with this, with this treatment and has had zero deaths. There is treatments out there that'll do this. There should be nobody getting sick. There should be nobody being killed, being taken over by this disease because there are things out here. And this is a very proven effective way that it works, and it's very cost-effective, less than $3 per dose. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Ron Friends. I'm at 715 Walnut Street. I didn't really intend to speak tonight, but the information just presented by the last three speakers, I thought needed a brief response, and I'll be very brief. Of course, of course, my cloth mask doesn't protect me. It protects you folks from... It does that by, not perfectly, but it does keep my droplets from coming out, and therefore it keeps a lot of virus and bacteria from coming out. Hence, the protection from COVID, this is recognized by public health experts throughout the nation, case closed as far as I'm concerned.
Anyone wanting to speak who hasn't spoken yet?
Hello, I'm Sonia Severson. I live on a farm. I come to Grand Forks and I shop. And I'd like to have you guys think about something tonight as you go to bed, you all really smart men and women. You have a cloth over your face. You have a cloth over your face and you're breathing in carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide. Does that make sense to your mind? Does it, does it make sense? There are young people fainting. There are young people not functioning anymore. Where did we get away from taking ownership of our health besides wearing a mask, taking some supplements, getting some sunlight, moving around, being full of life, having joy, not stress and fear? That takes away from our immune system. I bet some of you were athletes. I was an athlete. You're breathing in your air constantly. Doesn't, does it not feel funny when something's over your face and you, all day long? I just, I just want you to think about it. Use common sense. We should be promoting health and, and like this gentleman said about, if I'm worried about getting it, 99.9 whatever are coming through it. I am going to live life to the fullest. This is the only day I have. So, I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have more folks that want to speak? I don't want to cut people off before we go to the council discussion.
Hello, members of the council. My name is Dawson Duchuk. I'm a student at UND. I have a couple of things to say. My thoughts are a little bit scrambled right now. I didn't write anything down. I wasn't really intending to speak tonight, but I have a couple important things I think are important to keep in mind during this whole discussion. I was just Matt's neighbor in the roadway inn. We had COVID together. Not sure where either of us got it. We went out to lunch at Speedway the other day before we got it. They don't require masks there. We were masked into the facility, could have gotten it there. I went to Northside Cafe. They don't require masks. I was wearing a mask in. Other people around me weren't wearing masks. I have been very insistent on wearing masks in the community, but as most of you probably saw in my email, they're not very effective when only used by me. It's mostly to keep my droplets from spreading and less to keep yours out from me. I was fine. I had a little bit of a cough. I had a headache for a couple of days. I wasn't really worried for my safety. It was obviously inconvenient. I didn't want to go to the roadway inn for a week. I would much rather stay in my home, be able to see people, but I did what I had to do to slow the spread and prevent it from being others. I was very worried this summer, a month or two ago, when both my grandparents were sent to the hospital with COVID. My grandfather has COPD. He has breathing issues, and he was sent to the ICU. He lost like 40 pounds, and I was worried I was never going to see him again. He thankfully did pull through, but he is still hardly able to walk. He had to do occupational therapy. It really devastated my grandfather, and he's only 65 this year. He's not even in the category of extreme elderly people we see dying all the time in this country. Masks are an inconvenience. They're obviously not the first thing I choose to put on in the morning when I get dressed. But I've played volleyball in a mask for hours and been totally fine. We have to wear seat belts to protect ourselves and others. We have to wear shirts into buildings, even when it's hot outside, and it's uncomfortable to wear a shirt when it's 100 degrees, and we do that without worrying about it. It's second nature. And I think that wearing a mask during this important period in time where a lot of things are up in the air and we can't do a whole lot, one thing we can do is wear a mask. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak? Otherwise, we're going to close public comment. Come forward, please, if you'd like to.
I don't even know your names. My name is Sally McKinnon. I'm a citizen of Grand Forks. I want to ask you people that support the masks, can any one of you here bring up testimonies as Mr. Waterman brought up? Do you have actual facts at your disposal, papers and references? Anything that you can give us that shows that people have done tests to prove what he said is wrong? Do you have that, Mr. Weber? Do any one of you have that? And another thing I want to ask you, these masks, when we are all expected to wear them, what if 100% of people in Grand Forks wore them? And what if these things are causing, when we breathe out, it's not going forward, but the air that we're breathing is staying stagnant in those masks? And it's accumulating whatever virus there is, getting attached to the condensation, to the droplets of, you know, from our breathing in and out that rest under those masks? How many of the people that wear those are breathing that bad air in and out, in and out? How many of them are going to get sick? If you've got 100 people out here and not everybody's wearing masks and not everybody gets sick, what about the ones that are wearing them? Their chances of getting sick from that environment, breathing in and out, are a lot worse, I think, than walking in six feet apart out in the society without masks. I really want to see the scientific evidence that any one of you can produce that says that masks are necessary here. I don't want to just hear somebody listen to Dr. Fauci on the TV or listen to somebody on TV or in the news. I want, and I don't just want opinions, I want facts. If there are references that somebody, a layperson here in Grand Forks can bring up, then some of you people here that are in favor of masks ought to be able to bring up adequate evidence to support your cause, not just hearsays and not just repetition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jared Lundevich. Thank you for taking my comments. Mayor Bochensky, you played in the NHL. Did you play in a T-shirt and did you play in a ball cap? I assume no is the answer because it would not have protected you from getting hit by someone like Zdeno Chara. In negative 10 degrees, I assume everyone on this council does not go outside in a T-shirt and walk around and shovel because a T-shirt is not sufficient to protect you when it's negative 10 degrees. This mask, this is a 100-year epidemic pandemic that has spread worldwide. This is a bandana. You say this is going to protect me. You say this is fine. That's a piece of cloth. Somebody else has got a dirty piece of underwear on their face or a T-shirt or you name it. Nobody in this room that I see has a single filter on their mask. What are we really doing? You're going to mandate that we put a piece of cloth on our face? Maybe it makes us feel better. I get it. I understand. We're trying to do something to stop the spread. Does it work? And if it doesn't work, it's not your job to make someone else wear it any and everywhere. I hope you remember that.
Just say I got my money on Mayor Bochensky versus Chara, so. You're the only one.
I'm Jeannie Waterman. Thank you for allowing the public here to engage on this important conversation. One of the things that I've become aware of is that in 1918, there was a Spanish flu and that the majority of the people that died, died from a bacterial infection, which was caused because they, well, we don't know the cause, but a mandate was made for the masks. So, my concern is how much of this infection that's being raised up is actually being self-induced? We know that these particles, the virus can be inside of us. It's not alive. So, a lot of these testings really aren't very accurate because you can be positive just based on the fact that you've got the dead virus inside your system. So, we don't know whether it's alive or it's dead. We've got people who are asymptomatic because I believe, and I think that it's scientifically proven, that they don't have a live virus in their system. So, with that, those people aren't infected. We don't have really accurate numbers, and I'm starting to lose my train of thought, but I just think that it's really important that we recognize that masking doesn't seem to be an effective way. I think that a lot of the sickness and the numbers that we're seeing is because of self-inflicted sickness based on the fact that you're wearing a mask and there's all this moisture and bacteria that builds up, and we just need to look a little bit more deeply, perhaps look at that article that Mr. Waterman was talking about. Anyways, thank you very much.
I'm going to talk about things from my high school daughter's perspective. She's a very active, athletic girlfriend to everybody, and kids in that high school are breaking down right now. And they're high school kids. They can handle their emotion a little bit better. Think about the little kids. Kids are breaking down right now, and all everybody can think about is covering your face, breathing in your own air. It's all virtual signaling, and to be honest, I'm over it. I'm over teachers yelling at my daughter in school because she adjusts her mask and she could kill so-and-so's grandmother. The pressure that you guys are, everybody, is putting on our children over a virus that they are going to be fine through, they're not getting sick from. These kids are not getting sick. Influenza is worse on them. But my daughter has hockey players calling her bawling because the pressure and the stress that they are under right now is more than any of them can handle, and they have fear walking down the hall, adjusting their mask, taking it off, doing something wrong, and being isolated for two more weeks because of it. And I'm tired of it. I'm tired of seeing kids destroyed, depressed, anxious, sad, over something that is not affecting them. Leave them alone. These masks are not helping. If you're worried about your grandma, whoever it was, worry about your grandma. You take care of your grandma. That is not my daughter's responsibility. And I'm done. When I walked through that high school last week, they're not talking, they're not laughing, they're not smiling, they're not communicating. They are robots, and this needs to end. You guys work for us. We don't work for you, and what you are doing or potentially doing is wrong. Our kids are not going to go from school wearing these god-awful bacteria-infected masks to wanting to go out and be with their friends and being masked up and harnessed and suffocated. That is not okay. And you have children of every age breaking down, athletes, geniuses, everybody. They're losing it, and none of this is okay. These kids are getting sick right now from this, not from COVID, but from the measures taken to prevent it. It is not okay, and this is going to make things worse.
Hey, gang. My name is Riley Lindeman. I'm a student at UND. I also originally didn't plan to speak tonight. I was more interested in hearing the discussion, but what I'd really like to express is what I'm also tired of seeing. I'm tired of seeing my peers and my friends have to go to the roadway inn because they got sick. I'm tired of seeing the toll it takes on their mental health, on their grades, and their futures. We've heard a lot tonight about the effectiveness of these different kinds of masks and their ability to act as personal protective gear. And what we haven't seen is the comparison. We've seen these studies talked about that look at masks in a vacuum, but what happens is when everyone abides by mask mandates, the before and after risks are decreased, and that's scientifically proven. So, I'd like us to look at the comparison and the risk we run with and without a mask mandate. Without the mask mandate, we run the risk of the situation getting worse. We've heard a lot about businesses and their choice, but I think what's going to hurt businesses is when UND closes and students have to go home and can't engage with the Grand Forks community, can't engage with businesses. And I think what's going to hurt businesses is when those students can't go downtown, they can't go to Chick-fil-A because they have to go back to California, or they have to go back to Texas, or they have to go across the country back home because we didn't get on top of this when we could have. I think the time to act is now. I think we should nip this in the bud while our capacity is still at yellow. I think we have a responsibility... I think we have a responsibility to be responsible for our own actions. We've talked a lot about our own personal choice, but this mask isn't about protecting yourself. It's not about protecting, you know, your fellow high schoolers, it's about protecting the people who are most vulnerable. And it's not me. It's the elderly, and people with pre-existing conditions. And what I'm tired of seeing is friends get affected, family members get gravely ill. So I'm asking you, let's be smart, let's be safe, and let's believe the science. Thank you.
I'm Mary Dietrich, and I did not fill out a form. I just wanted to say I am a recovering COVID person, and I find that when I wear a mask, my oxygen levels drop, which is not something I want. It is also what happens to my good friend. And I just want to say that there are many studies out there that say that the mask-wearing is not as effective as most people think. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Otherwise, we're going to close the public comment section.
Mr. Armoprest, did you want to say anything?
I don't, you don't have to, I just want to make sure that we get every.
I've been here before, and at that point, I was asked a series of questions about what our position at UND is. And let me just remind council that we had a mandate in place to wear face coverings, to keep distances, and the masks that we were asking people to wear, they were required indoors when interacting with others, six feet or farther, it didn't matter, if they were interacting, they had to wear a mask. Outdoors, the requirement was, if you couldn't keep a safe distance, wear a mask. We believed deeply in this, we felt the medical science established this as an effective practice, and a way to mitigate the risk of transmission of the virus. And so, we believed this strongly, that we adopted these measures immediately, beginning in the summer. And last time I was here, I said it would be really nice if the city had the same set of standards that we had on campus, namely because we have students, faculty, and staff members who live in one world on campus, and a different world off-campus. And so, I urged, at that point, consistency, but I recognize it's a policy decision of the council and the mayor to do so. So now, as this decision rests before you know that UND, and I in particular, would certainly appreciate that consistency being achieved through steps taken by this elected body. And I know that we've seen good success, I think masks have reduced transmission, and I think we would expect to see the same throughout the city of Grand Forks. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think with that, we will take the discussion to the council. Does anyone want to start the discussion?
I'll move approval of the resolution.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
I'll take a second.
So, I appreciate everyone coming tonight and sharing their thoughts. I know that that may sound hollow, but I truly do, because the only way that we can make any kind of actual decision to move forward, either way, we do need to hear all sides of the story. And we live in a time when we have so politicized conversations, that instead of people who perhaps don't support a mask mandate, instead of contacting me, they'll contact somebody else who perhaps feels more inclined to that. Except that, I need to hear it, and I need to hear those reasons behind why not, and why, in support, in order to make a well-reasoned decision, or even to move forward. And so, I truly do appreciate the fact that you sat through some not really exciting conversations, admittedly, in order to get this far, and to be a part of this process. Not everybody does that, in fact, very few do, in a city of over 50,000 people. I still have only received maybe 100 emails. And so, that's a pretty stark testament to the fact that you're here, and you're willing to share your perspective. So I appreciate it. This resolution was meant to be a draft, as it's given to you for discussion, because I do think that we didn't need to reinvent the wheel. Fargo, Minot, other places, Devil's Lake, just tonight, said that they would be moving forward with the mask mandate that will go into effect on Thursday, but they're currently still writing it. Many places are going forward with these things as a way to best protect their whole community. We've talked a lot about fear in the last few months, whether we live in fear, whether we're not afraid of fear, or we're not fearing for our lives, or fearing a virus. But sometimes, you know, we need to actually put that aside, some of the rhetoric, and say, we need to take a step, we need to make an action, we need to lead. We can't allow fear of not being popular, or of not being re-elected, or of not being right necessarily, to stop us from moving forward in humility. We are not infallible people. My husband would tell you that, probably pretty readily. Because we pass a resolution, because we pass an ordinance, because the mayor issues an emergency order, it does not mean that it stands into perpetuity, in perpetuity. It can be changed, and that's the way that the government should run. It changes with people, it changes with time, it changes with need, but it changes to best serve its community as a whole. And I think that that is the most important part. And so, even if I don't vote in the same way that you perhaps would prefer, I do want you to know that I appreciate you engaging, and I appreciate the opportunity to try something, and I appreciate you holding us accountable. So if this doesn't help, as we move forward, that you'll continue to dialogue, you'll continue to show up, you'll continue to help us make Grand Forks the kind of place where you can come to a council meeting, and you can share your opinion, and you can be heard. I'm ready to vote, if you are.
Mr. Weigle, I think has something to add.
I think one of the great things about government, if there is any, is that we can have a conversation, and like last time, when the resolution was brought forward, or asked for us to discuss it, it was the last second before the end of a meeting. Tonight, we've heard from people on both sides, and I think there's a good level of information that come from both sides, and I understand both sides of what they're saying. But what I am disappointed in the fact of is that us as council members didn't even get to say anything before we had a motion and a second on the floor. That's what's frustrating to me. I do have concerns, and I'll ask for an amendment to the resolution. I've always kind of jabbed at our federal government, because nobody can ever seem to get along, and nobody's ever willing to compromise. And I came here tonight as somebody that wasn't a fan of a mask mandate, but willing to compromise. As far as the resolution, there is an enforcement portion of that, of $250, I'm not a fan of it. And for the reason is, is back in April, I sent a message to our public health director, and there was a quarantine order. If somebody broke that, and they were positive, they could be charged criminally. And what I thought of that is, we have somebody that's posted on Facebook that they're COVID-positive, we've got pictures of them continuing to leave their apartment, infecting people, but we won't even charge them out for it. And that was an order from the governor. But here, we've got a resolution that's on the floor, that we're willing to charge somebody $250 for not wearing a mask, when they may be perfectly healthy. I don't think that's right. We can't do one, and not the other. Secondly, when I look at the ending of the resolution, I know we've talked about, currently it says when the council basically decides to take the resolution off, what I would like to see is, if people are willing to compromise, that we move it to our local public health dashboard. And if we're in a high risk, I'm willing to have that mask mandate for indoor items, similar to what UND is at. I think if they're outside, and they can maintain a social distance, that mask mandate doesn't apply, but I would ask that those amendments, I would ask that we place those amendments to that resolution.
Oh, Mr. Weber.
I'm happy to make the amendment to the motion, to drop the line about the $250 The other, I'm happy to make that amendment first. So I think it would go to Mr. Vean, who seconded the motion, if he's willing to accept that.
So you made the motion, and you're all right with amending to remove the $250.
Dropping the clause about the $250 fine.
Mr. Vean, you were the second.
I think.
Mr. Gostad, I, so we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as is. So now, the question is, do we need an amendment?
You need a motion.
We need a motion.
As I understand, Councilmember Weber moved to amend.
Can anyone second that?
Anybody can second that motion.
Okay, so is there a?
And then you vote on that.
The amendment.
That the motion has been amended, not that you're voting in favor of it, but that the motion has been amended.
So there's a motion to amend the resolution to remove that $250 fine. Is there a second?
I guess I'm just curious why we're not discussing more, and then holding our amendments to the end. I'm sure, I have things to say, and I would like to, yeah, I don't think that, is that, do we have to do that now?
Well, yes, there's a motion, so we have to either have a second to further.
I'll withdraw my motion to amend for this time, to allow others to speak.
Okay, so we're, Mr. Weber, you actually made that motion, so will you withdraw that?
I'll withdraw that.
Okay. So, maybe before we do too many more motions or amendments, let's give council members an opportunity to speak. So, Mr. Cavami, did you have something you wanted to?
Sure, Fred, I don't want to. Thank you. I appreciate all the comments tonight. I think for a second, you know, I've been debating on this personally, and I've been against infringing on personal rights, but if we pull out science, and we pull out health, and we think about, so me personally, I ran, because I think Grand Forks is a great community, and I want to see Grand Forks thrive. And for me, that has a lot to do with economic development. And when I think economic development, my two biggest drivers are the schools, and specifically UND, and the school district. So how you keep those kids in school allows parents to work, and how you keep UND on campus allows them to spend their money here. So no science, no health, let's just not even worry about, let's just assume everybody is going to be fine, but regardless, we have to quarantine, we're having to go through these steps, so there's no changing that. Nobody's coming up here to argue, you know, quarantining for two weeks. So it seems like everyone's accepted that, and that's just the way it's going to be. So for me, all I care about is keeping the schools open, keeping the university open. If you look at the infection rate at the school district, it seems like they, whatever they're doing, I'm not sure what the magic is, but whatever they're doing has kept the infection rate low, and allowed my six-year-old daughter, who's fine wearing a mask, who wears a mask on the way to the car, even though I don't ask her to, because, well, now it keeps her face warm, but before she had a pretty mermaid mask, and she liked it. So all of her friends have seemed to adjust. My four-year-old will wear a mask, he seems to be fine. I think if it means that business operates, and that we have these teachers able to work, and the students at school, and the university students still here on our campus, which I think is extremely important to the city, I don't understand why I can't ask other folks to do what I ask my four-year-old to do. So with that, once we discuss this and have more development of what that amendment would be, I would support some sort of mask usage. I think that we've got some good steps to align with what UND is doing, and I don't know that I support the $250, so I think that what Councilmember Weigle discussed makes sense to me. So there's, thank you.
Mr. Sandy, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, Ms. Mark, thank you so much. I, boy, this is really, really awful. I appreciate Ms. Dockler doing all of her work. I also really appreciate everyone that came to the meeting tonight to speak, and offer both opinions and facts. I will say that I'm not much of a fan of hyperbole and innuendo, it has never swayed my opinion, and so for the people that were, that come up and use the, you're not this, and you're not that, you know, I believe that all of that discussion is a waste of our time, because we have more important things to do than to listen to people's opinions when they're accusing. For me, this is all about the school district. Mr. Cavami and I, I think, have been relatively consistent with the fact that I believe we need to keep the students in school. I coincidentally have, in the last half an hour, I've heard from my wife and my kids, who look at this differently, and they, my twins who now have to wear masks every day during school, and my wife, are all of the opinion that they're ready to homeschool now, because they think it's ridiculous that they have to wear masks in school all day long, knowing that they're separated more than six feet in the school district, as well as take all their precautions that they need to. And, you know, we're unfortunate, my twins are 16 years old now, they drive their own cars, and they have the wherewithal where they couldn't actually do all their schoolwork from home. Unfortunately, that's not the situation for all students within the city of Grand Forks, and I know for a fact that we really need the schools to stay open, and the students to have the capability of being in school, because it's very important for their parents to be able to work. I will go against the opinions of the people that are the closest to me in my life, and I will support mandating masks in our community, because I believe it's of the utmost importance to keep the school districts, or at least give the school administration and the school board the confidence to hopefully keep kids in our schools. I am not a supporter of the resolution as it's presented today, not because I don't think Ms. Dockler did a good job of it, but because I believe we should all be in this together. I've been saying this for a while, I think if we're going to do this, the mayor should execute an executive order, because of the timeliness of an executive order, rather than multiple readings and multiple meetings related to changing an ordinance. So if we have to go down the pathway of a resolution, so be it. I would support the friendly amendment of removing the $250 fine, as well as having it related to the community dashboard, on the health officers dashboard. But I would prefer that we table the resolution altogether, take a vote in support of having the mayor issue an executive order and move on. Thank you, Ms. Mark.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Vean?
I guess my question, I'm just following up on what Mr. Sandy said, his hope was that we would table the motion, is that right? Could you repeat that, Mr. Sandy?
I, you know, I don't see any need for doing a resolution for an ordinance change, knowing that it's going to take a few weeks to do it. If we're serious about requiring masks, the fastest way to do it is with an executive order by the mayor. I believe if the council is in agreement that masks are in order in our community, then we should suggest to the mayor that he should author an executive order tomorrow and move on.
Mr. Gostad, did you have?
Yeah, I can speak a little bit about, in anticipation of the question, we did a little research on the distinction between a research on the distinction between a resolution and an ordinance, particularly when there isn't, and I'll speak to the issue, when there isn't the penalty, so to speak. There's case law that, in North Dakota, that says a resolution is different than an ordinance in that an ordinance is a continuing regulation of a permanent rule of conduct. But a resolution is in the nature of being temporary, an option, or an administrative act, and is not necessarily the law, so to speak. So if you were going to go down the path of imposing the sanction or the penalty, it would seem to me that the two readings is going to be required, you're going to have to publish it. But if it's going to be a resolution that is not what I would deem to be mandatory, because I view something mandatory as that there's a consequence for not necessarily following. It's a directive, maybe, or you're urging certain conduct, then I think the resolution could be adopted fairly easily by the city council without necessarily the need for a second reading, because you're not creating an ordinance, you're not amending, you're not having that published in your ordinance book. Those type of issues becomes more temporary and I think that's what Councilmember Dockler was talking about, is it's something that is temporary for the time being and it doesn't have that penalty phase.
Further discussion, Mr. Mayor, did you want to say anything?
No, I appreciate the discussion as well. I've obviously been, you know, pretty forthright in my reluctance to do a mandate, you know, from the beginning. You know, obviously numbers are increasing. I've always felt it was the private business and the private individual to make their choice. As we're infringing on possibly the ability of schools to continue, it's, you know, it's becoming far more concerning. I think that, you know, while masks may help, I don't think that's the end-all, be-all. I think for some reason we equate that the only way we can save this or save that is to have a mask mandate and that, to me, there's a lot of things we need to do, a lot of things in private settings, a lot of responsibility that needs to take place regardless of what we mandate or setting any restrictions. So I guess I'm interested to see what happens here with council and go from there.
Mr. Weber?
First of all, it's been portrayed that this has been sort of a 50-50, that half of the population are for, half are against, half of the science promotes, half of the science is against. Over the last week, 10 days, we've received, I believe all of us have received dozens, perhaps I've received close to 100 emails. All have been in favor of a mask mandate, some form of mask requirement. The business argument, what our businesses need are healthy customers and businesses and employees are currently caught in the crosshairs of this. This is putting them in a difficult situation. In fact, city government is, our local businesses, not 100%, but by my experience, the vast majority of our local businesses feel caught in the crosshairs, especially because city government is putting our responsibility to address public health on their heads. As we saw with the Hugo's Mask Study, simply by indicating that there's a policy, we change people's behaviors. And the behaviors that we've had have resulted in 1,700 healthcare workers dying across the country. So I want this done for our local businesses. We can't separate public health from economic health and it's my understanding that the business community very much wants us to do this. Finally, if we're looking to the science, I don't want to get into a match about my sources versus your sources, but, Mr. Waterman, I believe that all of those sources that you presented were from back in March and April when, yes, we did not yet understand much about COVID and both the CDC and the WHO were sending out confusing mixed messages. Over the last several months, those messages have been quite clear. If you go to the CDC website now, the first thing you'll see is "wear a mask." Dr. Burts was just here. This is the Corona Response Coordinator for the White House Coronavirus Task Force. She called for wearing a mask. And so, in the spirit of compromise asked by Councilmember Weigel, again, I will make a motion to amend the original motion to drop the $250 fine. I believe that would make it possible for this to be passed and be put into effect with all possible haste. And that's my current motion. Thank you.
There's a motion to amend approving the resolution, is there a second? Mr. Weigel?
I just have a question for Mr. Weber.
Oh, we need a second before we can have discussion. Does anybody wish a second? How about this, I'll second for the sake of discussion. Mr. Weigel?
Mr. Weber, would you be willing to go along with the second motion, or the second amendment that I proposed regarding when this will expire? Ultimately, I'd like, I'd love to see Mayor Bochensky do the executive order as well, but I think.
That's my preference as well.
But I think if we have a definitive, I think what's important to the community is we understand where we're at. I think when we leave something like this so open-ended, typically we have an emergency resolution, it's, we see it with the flooding, we do it because of the fact that there's opportunity for funding, right? We don't typically focus on that emergency declaration all that much. I think this is different. I think if people have the opportunity to see whether the masks are making an impact or not, whether numbers are continuing to go up or go down, I think it gives some people something to work towards versus just saying, well, it's in place until the city council decides that it no longer is. And I, that's what I like. I like setting a goal out there, trying to reach that goal and making progress towards it.
Here's my concern about that. I've said this several times, I feel that we've squandered a real opportunity. If we go back to the summer when our numbers were low and we would have taken some more proactive measures, we might have avoided this. More directly relevant, when the students came back, it was completely predictable that we would see an increase in infection rates. But President Armacost, you did an amazing job of addressing that. And I feel that had the community supported you more fully back then, we would not be in the situation we are now and that we would have been more fully able to take advantage of the fine work that was done at UND. At this point, I'm inclined to agree with you, Councilmember Weigel, but I'm not sure exactly what it is you're looking for. If it's simply moving from red to orange, I would be concerned about that. Can you give me a clear idea of what you're looking for in the second part of the motion, or the compromise motion?
I was looking for red to orange, but would even be willing to compromise to yellow. Like I said, I'm not a fan of it, but I came here with good intentions to compromise and work towards a goal with the rest of you, knowing that whether I voted no or not, it was going to pass.
I'd be happy to make that second compromise motion as well. So what I'm looking for is an amended motion to drop the $250 fine and to, the resolution would take effect on, hopefully, can, Mr. Gostad, can the resolution take effect immediately with the vote?
Yeah, it could. The way it's drafted is it was effective November 3rd. And here's, and I want to go back and make sure that the council understands is that with that penalty, there are due process issues that need to be addressed. The other thing is, is that the way it's drafted, it's up to $250. Don't even know, we don't know what that fine would be.
Good.
So somebody would have to, the judge would have to make that determination.
Can we drop that entire clause then? That's the intention of my motion.
Correct. And with those type of, it's a resolution, it seems like it's the council then urging the citizens to wear a mask. Because it, from my opinion, if you don't have those type of enforcement mechanisms, it doesn't become a mandate, it becomes an urging for the citizens to wear masks under these set of circumstances.
A resolution encouraging mask wearing, yes. And I believe that was the intention. And so, and also in the spirit of compromise, the resolution shall take effect immediately and shall remain in effect until the local public health director's dashboard is showing a risk level of yellow. Is that consistent? Yes. So that would be my amendment motion. Would you second that, Councilmember Michael?
Be happy to.
Don't you have a second?
Here, Mr. Vean, I believe.
Don't we have a motion?
It changed again. It changed again.
There's a motion and a second, and a motion to amend and a second. So this is an additional amendment. Mr. Gostad, can we do this or can we?
Trying to figure out where we're at.
Yes.
As I understand, there was a motion to amend and that only incorporated the penalty, correct?
And I'd be willing to withdraw that. Would you be willing to?
So he would be willing to withdraw that and make a new, so I'll withdraw my second.
It's much cleaner if he withdraws it and restates his motion to amend. And I want to make sure you understand that a second and a vote on that amendment is not a vote in favor of the particular, it's just to amend the draft that you'd be voting on.
Yes. So, Mr. Weber, you will withdraw the amendment on the floor and then you are going to make a new one?
Yes. And the new one, I'll state it one more time, is to completely drop the clause about the $250 fine and to amend the final clause to state, "this resolution shall take effect immediately and shall remain in effect until the cities, until the local public health director's dashboard is showing a risk level of yellow." And I believe that's Councilmember Weigel's intention.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second for an amendment.
Yes. And just so that I understand, then by removing that penalty, there just is no penalty with respect to this resolution, correct?
Still open for discussion?
Yes. So now we've got a motion to amend the resolution on the floor. So, Mr. Cavami, did you have a point?
I was just curious if, Mr. Gostad, if you had any familiarity with the, whatever was passed in Fargo, because I believe it was an executive order by the mayor, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
So an executive order by the mayor, and was it the language a mandate or a recommendation?
The language, as I viewed the, what the mayor in Fargo wrote, there were no penalties. So I know that he used the term mandate in there, but I, again, without, I mean, again, we've done research and I think you've read my memo on this, that there is a distinction between a mandate, that when there's a mandate, there's consequences for not following it. So I'm not, I know he used the term mandate in his executive order, but there really isn't any consequence for not following that, what the mayor issued down there. I think there was something about that it didn't prevent some business owner from asking local law enforcement to come in and remove somebody for trespassing if they were violating their, the business's rules, which is the normal, that really didn't change anything. It didn't create a penalty in my estimation. So I think in, in my opinion, and they may have a different view of what a mandate is down in Fargo, but my opinion is that if there is no consequence, it doesn't constitute a mandate, it's more of an urging or a directive of the citizens to wear a mask.
Sure. I guess I ask that only in that, in my opinion, I agree with Council President Sandy, that I would like to ask Mayor Bochensky to consider everything that's said here and rather than have us do something that might not be perceived as having any sort of authority, at least an executive order even without a mandate, would be perceived as something that I'm hoping that people would consider, just like going to a grocery store, there's that requirement to go in, even though there is not a penalty.
May I respond?
Yes.
And I think that authority exists with the mayor and whether you ask him or, the mayor would have that discretion. I'm not sure the council can necessarily direct a mayor to issue an executive order. I mean, he can certainly consider the comments tonight and make a decision, one way or the other, but I don't think the council can necessarily mandate, if I can use that term, the mayor to take a certain action.
That's understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, further discussion on the amendment. Ms. Dockler, Mr. Vean?
No, if, I think, I do like the way that you've worded the amendment now, getting it to the yellow, I think is what we said with the, and listening to what our attorney has talked about between a resolution and a ordinance seems to make sense. With the resolution, we can implement this quicker, obviously, than if we did an ordinance. An ordinance would have to have a first reading and a second reading and we would go through quite a lengthy process. This does get something on the books as quickly as possible. I think it doesn't eliminate us from doing an ordinance if that be, that we were looking for a penalty. I mean, that's something that could still happen beyond passing the resolution, but this gives, with the urgency of where we are, this is probably one of the most urgent things that we can do within our abilities, we'll say. But again, I wouldn't say it takes away the option of making, of having a penalty through a ordinance if, again, we felt that's the next step. And, you know, we talked some time ago about having a plan for how we might move up and as it's gotten worse, we would have to implement more. I agree with Mr. Weber about having tried, done something earlier because now we're being more reactive than proactive. But again, this is at least putting something in place and that's why I would support this. And I wouldn't turn away from the fact of looking at an ordinance should the time come. So I'm supportive of, I think, the amendment that has been made.
All right. So are we ready to vote on the amendment? Mr. Sandy, are you clear?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. All in favor of amending the proposed resolution to remove the fine and attach the roll-off to the health officer's dashboard? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, so that amendment passed unanimously. So now we come back to the resolution as amended. Is there a further comment from anyone, further discussion points? Mr. Mayor, anything further? Okay. Mr. Sandy, anything from you?
No, I'm ready to vote, thank you.
All right. All in favor of approving the resolution as amended? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone, for civic engagement and public discourse in a very respectful manner. Mr. Cavami, did you have something?
So I just wanted to see if we're able to take a moment and realize that politically we're all very different and we've all agreed unanimously on something? And is it within our ability to make a motion, to make a request for the mayor to consider what we just did? And what's our ability with that?
Well, you could certainly make a motion to request. I think the conversation, I think, is, would be sufficient. I don't know.
Do you think we're okay? Is the motion heard then, Mr. Mayor?
Has a point been made?
I have taken into account your vote.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Anything further in terms of discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, thank you. And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.